Welcome, everybody. We're going to start our meeting. There's a couple of seats down front if you'd like to come on down. We're going to get started. This is the Gurnee Village Board Meeting, regular meeting of November 11, 2024. Roll call, please.
Ross?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
O'Brien?
Present.
Balmes?
Present.
Torgensen? Woodside?
Present.
Five present, one absent.
All stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. It's a pleasure to see so many people here, and you're not here for issuing complaints, I bet. So that's good, right? Here for a good reason, right? So we're going to go through a few consent items, and then we'll roll right into the reason why, I'm guessing, most of you are here tonight. So we'll start with the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Motion by trustee Balmes, second by trustee Garner. Roll call, please.
Ross?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Balmes?
Aye.
Woodside?
Aye.
Five ayes, one absent.
Motion carries. Pat?
Item number one, approval of the minutes on the October 21st, 2024, and October 28th, 2024 meetings. Item number two, approval of ordinance 2024 to 68, extending a temporary moratorium on the construction of accessory structures that exceed more than 600 square feet within residentially zoned districts by amending ordinance number 2024-45. Item number three, approval of Public Works Department request or recommendation to renew fuel purchase contract with Avalon Petroleum Company for the 2025 calendar year, 2024, low bidder, no rate adjustment. Item number four, approval of Police Department request to purchase 12 pole-mounted solar radar units, digital speed signs from Elan City at a cost of $35,975, $11,100 discount off regular price. Item number five, approval of Police Department request to purchase seven Flock Falcon cameras and two Flock Safety Wing licenses from Flock Group, Inc., at a cost of $27,800 Illinois Attorney General Organized Retail Crime Grant Proceeds. Item number six, approval of the 2025 Village Board meeting schedule. Item number seven, approval payroll for period ending October 18th, 2024 in the amount of $1,044,899.30. Item number eight, approval payroll for period ending November 1st, 2024 in the amount of $1,317,060 and no cents. Item number nine, approval bills for period ending November 11th, 2024 in the amount of $3,755,022.87.
Is there a motion?
Second?
Motion by trustee Garner, second by trustee O'Brien. Roll call, please.
Ross?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Balmes?
Aye.
Woodside?
Aye.
Five ayes, one absent.
Motion carries. On to petitions and communications. Item number one, approval of proclamation designating November 11, 2024, as Veterans Day in the Village of Gurnee in recognition of Hometown Heroes Banner Program. On Veterans Day, we profess expressly profound gratitude to the courageous men and women who have served in the Armed Forces, recognizing their dedication, sacrifice, and patriotism. We pledge our duty to ensure they receive the respect, support, and care they deserve. Their valor and commitment have left an indelible mark on our nation's history and continue to inspire us to build a more just, inclusive, and secure society. We also honor the vital contributions of veterans' family and acknowledge our shared national responsibility to provide veterans with health care, benefits, and assistance needed for a successful transition into civilian life, education, and overall well-being. We remain committed to upholding the principles of equality, justice, and freedom for which our veterans have fought while celebrating the enduring legacy of courage, honor, and commitment they have bestowed upon us. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Hood, Mayor of Gurnee, do hereby proclaim November 11 as Veterans Day in the Village of Gurnee and encourage all to pay tribute to veterans, living and departed, for their dedication to our country and their service in the Armed Forces. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion by trustee Ross. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I missed the second.
Oh, Greg's second. Okay, sorry. So what we'll do now is that we have the Hometown Heroes Banner Program that I'm going to invite Jim Huesel down to at this moment to provide those to the families and to the veterans that are present tonight. As everybody knows, this is Veterans Day, and for us, that means a lot to us, and especially to me. And Jim and I about a year ago talked about this night, tonight, and we wanted to make it a special night, that we recognize we can always pay honor, but there's always another step or another level we can go in terms of recognizing the different veterans that are within our town. And that is part of what the banners have done for us in terms of their being flown on Oak Plain Road over this last several weeks. And tonight, we get the opportunity to give those out to the different veterans that are in our village. And say beyond that, and I've heard from a few people, and I think it's really true, words are cheap. We can provide honor, but at the end of the day, do we really provide them with the services and the various things that the veterans need? And that's what our effort, and that's what the commission that Jim heads up and something that we formed a year ago, and that we hope that we can bring attention to our veterans as to the services and different benefits that are available to them. Because the different places throughout town would say is that's our number one problem, is that veterans don't know what's available to them. And that's what we want to make easy for them to obtain. We want them to feel honored in that, but also to be respected and be able to receive the things that maybe they were missed out on because of the choices they made. And I think that's most honoring to them, is that we can put feet to our words. And that's what exactly Jim has done with his group of men and women that are veterans as well. They had a good idea as to what veterans needed, and those are the choices that we've made here in the Village of Gurnee, and we hope to carry that on year after year after year. This isn't just a one-time thing. This isn't just today, because we all live under the freedom that was purchased by us, in some cases by the blood of people that have been shed for us, to be able to, for me to stand up here and freely talk, and for us to be here without the fear of reprisal. So I'm really thankful for the veterans and for what Jim's chosen to do. So we're going to start and just go through the different, the list of veterans, and if you could just come down when your name is called. And if you'd like to say something, that's great. If you don't, if you just would like to receive the banner, that's fine, too. So we're going to start right at the top, and that's Emerson T. Rivago, Branch of Military, Navy, dates of service 1976 to 1997. Okay, thank you. The next is Ross Sorrentino III, Marines, 1989 to 1994. Next is Jeff Britz, Navy, 1991 to 1996. Next, we'll take these two together. It's Frederick Balmes, Army, 1941 to 1943, and Bill Balmes, Army, 1943 to 1946, and trustee Jeanne Balmes.
Anybody who knows me, I'm a father, so forgive me, but this was my father, from my father and my uncle who died in the war, World War II. And I can't begin to tell you how grateful I am that the village did this. I put it on Facebook, and the responses I got from people, and so impressed that the Village of Gurnee did this and that it was sent out. My father was one of 10 kids. The first six were all boys, and all boys served in the Army during World War II. My cousin wrote a book about it, for which I am very grateful for. And of course, all my cousins were like, well, what about my dad? And I'm like, get the information gathered together, because you're going to do this again. So I just want everyone to know, and those who missed it, please, please, get the information together, the photo together, so that they too can be honored, because I can't begin to tell you how proud I am. Thank you.
The next is Marvin E. Schmidt, Army, 1967 to 1969. Next is Dick Holma, Army, 1953 to 1961. Next is Francis Jacob Neme, Army, 1944 to 1946. Congratulations. Thank you.
I'm not the son, but I'm the nephew. And this was number three in line, number three in line of the four brothers that served in World War II and the Korean War. So I'll be back.
Stay right here. Stay right here. So next is Leonard W. Neme, Sr., Air Force, 1952 to 1956.
Leonard was number four of the sons, youngest. He's the one that served in the Korean War. This is his grandson, receiving for him.
Robert Vincent.
Oh, okay, towards the bottom. Let's just do it. Let's just go for it. Vincent Alexander Neme, Navy, 1942 to 1945.
This is my son.
Congratulations.
We now have four generations of Vincent Neme's family.
And then we have the last one, Robert Walter Neme, Sr., Marines, 1941 to 1945.
I'm receiving this from my cousins. Here we go. Cousins who are in Florida. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Next is Edward Mike Gillings. Some people say Gillings, but it's Gillings, right, Cheryl? Yes. Where are you, over there? Yes. And Gordon Gillings as well. So please step up. Cheryl and David.
Edward Gillings was born in a house about two blocks from here, and enlisted in the Army in 1941, but he was mustered out because he turned 28 as being too old and put in the reserves. But after Pearl Harbor, he was called back and was serving in North Africa with an artillery division when he died in service to his country, and he is currently buried in a military cemetery in Tunisia, North Africa.
He died in February of 1943, and in August, my dad, who was 36 at the time, volunteered or enlisted. And he had friends who were married and had children, and he wasn't married at the time, and so he thought he should go instead of them. And he went, because he was an engineer, he went to Germany and Belgium and France and did, built roads and bridges that had been bombed out and so forth. But he was able to come home then in '45. He married my mom in '46. My sister was born in '47, and in '49, he became the mayor of Gurnee. And so all my life, from when I was little until I was 22, my dad was mayor.
Little history lesson, right? That's good. Next is Richard Mosher, Army, Mosher,
I want to thank Jim Huesel for nominating me. I'd like to thank the Village of Gurnee for honoring my time in service. Thank you very much.
Next is Kevin Burke, Marines, 2014 to 2019.
I drive to work and I pass by the street every day, and I must say, it was wonderful to see my son's picture up there every day. And on my way home, I would always go the same way. But just seeing everyone's picture up there is just, is just amazing. And I really, I mean, it's going to be really sad when I go to work tomorrow and not seeing all their faces, because it's truly amazing, and I'm so grateful for what you guys did. So, thank you.
Next is Douglas K. Vander Yatt, Army, 2013 to present, so current.
I just want to express, too, that it's just been so great to drive down Oak Plain. I admit that I did it a few more times than I normally do, just to see all these wonderful human beings honored in such a special way. And we are accepting this on behalf of our son, Doug, who is a Warren graduate and is a Black Hawk pilot currently stationed at Fort Campbell, Kentucky. And thank you.
Next is M.G. Chuck Whittington, Army National Guard, 1986 to 2019.
Thank you. So does anybody here know Chuck Whittington? I'm obviously not Chuck. He was a, he was a, here, resident in Gurnee for a really long time, and he retired major general. He was in the Army forever. And he's like a brother to me. I've worked with him for probably 27 years. And he's, when I heard about this program, definitely a hero, and not in the community anymore, but he's still alive. And I just wanted to thank Mayor Hood and Jim and Austin. Where's Austin? Thank you for putting this all together. It was great.
Next is Sean P. Mayer, Marines, 2003 to 2005. Family?
I'm humbled, number one, but I have to tell you, I'm a Warren, I'm a retired Warren Township bus driver for the high school. The day they went up, I got more calls, more pictures, and it's trickled down to our family. We are all honored, and I will be back next year. My other son, Sean was killed in action, but my other son is 20 years in the Navy. I will get a sign up for him.
Next is Tyler Henkel, Marines, 2017 to 2021. Next is Joey W. Dimmock II, the second, Army, 2007 to 2010. Family?
Hi, excuse me, we're the Dimmock family. We're a Gold Star family, and we're touched to actually be included in this. So thank you so much. Joey did graduate from Warren, Army Ranger, passed in 2010 in Afghanistan. So please remember our troops that are deployed and currently serving. And thank you very much for this honor.
I think we've covered everybody. Hopefully I haven't missed anybody, no? All right, so we're committed for, oh, go ahead, Jim.
As was mentioned earlier before, we're going to continue this program into the future. So if you have any relatives, as long as they graduated from Warren, live in Gurnee or in Gurnee today, we want to honor their service in that. The Blue Ribbon Commission is set up so we can communicate to the community about veterans in our community. Thank you.
All right. Onto the next part is item number two, is the administration of the oath of office for the promotion of Fire Lieutenant Jim Graemer to Fire Battalion
Okay, so, well, that's hard to follow up, obviously. Very touching, and thank you to all our veterans that were recognized tonight. Also, quite a few veterans still here in the crowd tonight, many that serve Gurnee, both on the police and fire departments. Thank you for your service as well. The reason we're here tonight is the promotion of Jim Graemer. 30 years ago, I remember the night Jim Graemer slept his first ever night in a fire station. I just so happened to be on duty that evening. We won't get into the details. However, it's special. His, his father was actually my captain. He was our commander that night. The shift commander on duty was Ron Graemer. It's so interesting to get to watch Jim for the last 30 years, 27 career, grow up and become who he is today. Jim was ready for this promotion 10, 15 years ago. The Gurnee Fire Department grew a lot in the 90s. So quite often, our people got backed up a little bit. We weren't able to promote people as quick as they were really ready. So Jim has stuck to it, continued to test. The battalion chief position is the highest tested position within the Gurnee Fire Department. That means every two years, Jim gets back, out in front of everyone, starts testing for the position, goes through the entire process. His family deals with it. Four to five months of reading and studying and the stress of all that, and then just to know a promotion doesn't really come and the list expires, and then you do it again in two years. Jim has stuck along the whole time and did that. It just shows his fortitude, and that's how he worked his, his entire career up to this point. Jim was a person that, when someone new comes on the fire department, when you want a piece of knowledge, whether it's a piece of history or how to work a tool, Jim is someone everyone goes and seeks out. Jim's always a person that's out there willing to work hard, right next
That work ethic that he brought and the knowledge he brought that he shares to this day with all the other firefighters is something that you don't see every day now in the fire service. It's something that we've lost is we're hiring 20, 23-year-olds that necessarily weren't tradesmen yet. Eric brings that knowledge with. In day one, he made a difference when he walked in. You could tell. Sometimes Administration Eric would butt heads, believe it or not. But that's a compliment to Eric. Eric challenged the system once in a while, and he didn't do it to cause trouble. He did it because he wanted to see things better. He was always out working. Eric sits on our Union Board, he sits on our Foreign Fire Board. He always represents all the firefighters. He brings a perspective in from the outside, a little bit different than what I had after being 30 years here. It's been very refreshing. Eric tested for Lieutenant, similar to what Jim does, took that test, and he got the role of Acting Officer, Acting Lieutenant. The moment Eric got that role, to watch him change from the days when he was on the line and he was working with everyone to when he was their supervisor, all those 10 years of respect he garnered, all in two years, people followed him. He knew how to take care of people. He always went out of his way. They say great leaders would never ask for someone to do something they wouldn't do or haven't done. That's one of the things Eric brings to the table. To this day, there's not a task Eric wouldn't do first before asking anyone. It makes it very easy for people to follow when he leads. So Eric is more than ready for this position of Lieutenant, and I'm excited to hear his oath. Congratulations, Eric.
Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Eric Lieber.
Having been appointed to?
Having been appointed to.
The Office of Fire Lieutenant?
The Office of Fire Lieutenant.
The Village of Gurnee?
The Village of Gurnee.
The County of Lake?
The County of Lake.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I'll support the Constitution of?
That I'll support the Constitution of.
The State of Illinois?
The State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the United States. I went backwards.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
Of the Office of Fire Lieutenant.
Congratulations.
Who's going to pin your badge?
If my wife Lauren and my two daughters can come up. What Chief Kramer said. No. No, thank you to the Village Board, the Administration, the Warren-Wokeyen Fire Protection District, the Civil Service. Gurnee's a great place to work. I'm glad I found my home here. I'm glad I got the opportunity, and I'm even more happy about this opportunity. Hopefully I do right by everyone above and below me, so I appreciate the kind words. Hopefully I can remain living up to those. I have my family here, my wife Lauren, my beautiful children Remy and Avery, my mom, my brother, my cousin Mike, my cousin Steve, their families. Thank you all for coming out and supporting, and hopefully I can live up to your expectation. So thanks.
So now, not to be outdone, the Police Department wants to also promote somebody as well, so that's... So Administration of Oath of Office for the Promotion of Police Officer Pat Murray to Police Sergeant.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jeremy Gunn, I'm the Deputy Chief. I just want to talk about the first night that Patrick slept at the Police Department. So a little bit about Patrick, I'm actually really excited to be able to recognize him tonight. Patrick was one of the guys that we went out and tried to recruit. In fact, his wife would say that we probably bothered her quite a bit to get him to come to Gurnee. And talking to Pat, the main reason that we got him at Gurnee is actually retired Sergeant Michael Mann. Pat came to a training class at Gurnee, and while he was in the training room, Sergeant Mann at the time walked out and threw an application down in front of him and said it's time to come over here. And Pat took that into consideration, and here he is. He is actually eight years to today's date where he joined us. So we're really excited about that. Just a little bit about Patrick's career. He started in 2016 on today's date. Before that, he was a police officer in a neighboring jurisdiction. He served in several different roles, including field training, search warrant team member, major crash assistance team, which is MCAT. He was a supervisor for them. Crash reconstructionist, crime-free housing officer, child safety seek technician, UAF operator, juvenile officer, crisis intervention officer, and union stewardess. In 2023, he founded the annual Cops and Bobbers Fishing Derby in collaboration with the Gurnee Park District, and has been actively involved in community and department events. Patrick has received several accolades, including the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists 100 Career DUI Award. In 2018, Police Department Officer of the Year, MCAT Rookie of the Year, and two lifesaving awards. In 2023, he achieved national accreditation through the Accreditation Committee for Traffic Accident Reconstructionist, and is only one of 13 active police officers in Illinois to hold this accreditation. He's married to his wife Kristy and have four children, Charlotte, Colton, Claire, and Christian. It's pretty exciting. We've asked, we've tried to get him to test for many years, tried to get him to do other specialties, but Patrick is one of the very few accident reconstructionists that he gets called out on major crashes, excuse me, to give a voice to the victim. So we're excited to have him now mentoring other officers, so this is exciting.
Is there a name?
Patrick Murray.
Having been appointed to?
Having been appointed to.
The Office of Sergeant?
The Office of Sergeant.
The Village of Gurnee?
The Village of Gurnee.
County of Lake?
County of Lake.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution?
That I'll support the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois?
Of the State of Illinois.
And of the United States?
And the United States.
How faithfully discharge the duties of?
How faithfully discharge the duties of?
The Office of Sergeant?
The Office of Sergeant.
Congratulations.
Thanks, everybody. Just wanted to say thanks to everybody who came out today for me, friends, family, the Board, Civil Service Commission. I appreciate what you guys have done for me. Love working in this town. As the Deputy Chief said, it took me a long time to get to this position. I've been doing the job a long time, and part of the reason it took me so long to test for Sergeant was because I love the job so much, and I couldn't really see myself in any other role. So I'm excited to take on this new position, and just want to thank especially my family here, my wife. She's the real MVP, takes care of these four kids, works full-time, and also deals with the police officer schedule. So really appreciate it, and thank everybody for coming out, and I will do my best in my role.
So excited, thank you.
Congratulations.
Two were in Houston, one's in...
Congratulations, you. You all deserve it.
I'm fine, aren't you? I'm sorry, he's like a spirit.
Awesome. Congratulations.
But the last one, she likes to come home now.
Knowledge, have experience.
And that knows your house inside out.
Everybody's happy, so. Good, good. Bit of surprise. I just saw you on Facebook, girl, or something. I'm like, hey, there they go. So where are you guys now? Oh, man. Like, give me a hug, son. And then they pick you up, and you know. But that means... Diddy. Oh, that's starting. I gotta get on mine, eh? I think I might have to crack a whip, you know? Like my mother said, bring me some grandbabies in here.
Got Cheryl to do it, too.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Oh, no, that's highly valuable. This shows the real you.
Unfortunately.
Nothing unfortunate about that, that's just sweet.
Since 2001.
No, I do too.
Civil service, that's what...
Thank you.
Diane Summers with two Ms.
S-U-M-M.
At... Email, yeah, email.
Oh, I can't do... I'm proud of all of them.
Yeah.
And it took the longest...
H-L Strategies? H-L?
Yeah.
Strategies?
Oh, put a... Hit the off button, one or the other.
And my husband is also there.
Okay. You want to?
How does this work?
So I'm going to open it up, probably in about a minute.
We're going to collect the photos, just... They're following you.
Which is it? Thank you for yours.
See you, guys.
Hey, awesome. So it would be for both of us, because we met my first day on active duty.
Okay, we're going to get started again for, we'll go on down to new business. Item number one, approval of ordinance 2024.
69.
Authorizing the execution of a small business capital investment grant agreement with Sosa V LLC, doing business as Comfort Inn Gurnee for property located at 6080 Gurnee Mills Circle, Gurnee. Pat?
Sure, so remember the committee, the whole meeting, we had an update on the small business capital investment grant program. And Matt, our community outreach coordinator covered the two transformational grant recommendations from staff that would be coming forward to consideration. So this is the first one, as the mayor said, is for Comfort Inn. What they are looking to do is install all-new guest room electronic lock system within the building that's compatible with the mobile app, install premium vinyl flooring in all 63 rooms, then upgrades to the pool system within the building. So total projects estimated at about $105,000, with the village grant portion covering up to $50,000, which is the maximum through the transformational grant. So just a reminder on those, two transformational grants a year. Applications are selected in the fall, then reviewed by a selection committee that affords a recommendation. So that is what is before you tonight, is the first of the two recommendations from that committee.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee O'Brien, second by Trustee Ross. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ross?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baumis?
Aye.
Woodside?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Motion carries. Item number two, approval of ordinance 2024.
70.
Authorizing the execution of a small business capital investment grant agreement with Schiffshakati Hotels LLC, doing business as Comfort Inn and Suites for property located at 5420 Grand Avenue, Gurnee. Pat?
Sure, so this is the second transformational grant. Comfort Inn and Suites is looking at complete roof replacement of the facility, so projects estimated at $191,000, with again, $50,000 coming from the village. Also just mention, when the committee was reviewing the applications from this year as it relates to the hotel, they really focused on the importance of just that first impression that hotels make to visitors that come to the community. So having them well maintained, in good shape, and just the positive impression that they leave and the benefits that it has for Gurnee. So again, Country Inn and Suites looking at roof replacement.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by Trustee Garner. Second by Trustee O'Brien. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ross?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baumis?
Aye.
Woodside?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Motion carries. Item number three, approval of renewals related to the village's self-insured medical plan. Health insurance plan stop-loss coverage a period of 12 months with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois, subject to other terms of the proposal, at an estimated cost of $626,906 and $24,245 for aggregate coverage. And administrative services only contract for a period of 12 months with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois at a rate of $77.26 per employee per month, and adjusted for anticipated annualized prescription rebates of $325,874. Addition of a Medicare supplement plan and Part D prescription drug plan for retirees through Benastar Administration Services, Inc. Pat?
Sure, so I'm going to let Christine analyze. This is the time of year, every year our health insurance renewal is up in front of us, so Christine and Erica work with Peter Wright, with Wright Benefit Strategies that we have a longstanding relationship with as far as helping us with the health insurance renewal throughout the year. So again, Christine and Erica worked hard on this, and I'll let Christine give you a high-level summary.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Yes, so as we have seen in previous years, we go through our health insurance renewal. We start off with generally the stop-loss proposal. If you recall, last year, we moved our individualized stop-loss limit to $90,000 with the expectation that that would help calm some of our claims and come up with a reduced premium for this coming year. Unfortunately, we kind of took a little bit of a hit with some unexpected high claim. New high claimant came onto the plan beyond what we were expecting, and along with continued high levels of utilization of prescription drugs, primarily very costly drugs, so that kind of caused us to be going the opposite direction of what we anticipated when we were here this time last year. So as we were working with Peter Wright and his group, usually with our stop-loss, the Blue Cross Blue Shield does not give us a laser. If you recall, laser is like a carve-out of a certain claim to a specific dollar amount that the insurance will not cover, and those claims come to the village to insure fully. Blue Cross typically doesn't issue their stop-loss with that. However, with this go-around, with the high claimant, it would have resulted in a 49% increase in our premium. So they did give us two options, one with the laser and one without. The laser would be a $300,000 separate cost if claims were to get that high on that individual claimant. That would only result in a 16.9% increase in our premium cost, plus the additional $300,000. In looking at the claim and getting information from Blue Cross, it does not appear that that claimant will actually reach that $300,000 limit. The claim itself seems to be going into stabilizing, so we expect that most likely in the next year, those claims will be under $150,000. So with that in mind, and with the laser amount, we are recommending that we go forward with the laser on that particular claim and the 16.9% increase. Secondly, we continue to review the pharmacy drugs and the administration. Those are also managed through Blue Cross Blue Shield. Again, as I mentioned, the pharmacy cost growth continues to be just a challenge, especially with a group of our size. So, you know, we continue to look for ways to manage that. Unfortunately, it's just a very difficult situation to be able to manage. I mean, prescription drugs are costly. There's so many vast improvements that are saving people's lives. I mean, it's very hard to kind of put any sort of control on that. So again, you know, we are recommending just going forward with the estimated costs for that for this year. And then, as we get through our claims, we are hoping that we will be in a better position. We are using the claims data through August 2024. We are actually over 100% loss ratio. At this time last year, we were just below 100%. So we are trending upwards. I'm hoping that in the next few months, it will level out and continue to go down, but we are just kind of covering the anticipated expenses if they do continue to move upwards. We did review potential plan designs, as mentioned in the memo. In combination of all the things that we could do, little tweaks here and there, it does not amount to much of a savings, and sometimes those things can be more troublesome than they are efficient. So we deferred on any potential plan design changes for this year, and then also reviewed the shift to a fully insured plan versus a self-insured. Again, the economics of that does not make sense. It would be a very long time before we could actually achieve a savings in a fully insured status, so that was not something that we were able to pursue. Again, as we do every year, we visit other options. Again, we were presented with a network change, slightly different than what was in the mix last year, but same concept. Again, looking through that and the estimated savings and the difficulty with being able to educate employees on a new plan, it just didn't merit the value to be changed into that sort of a structure. So one of the couple other things that we are doing just administratively, we do have two health plans. Right now, we have a HRA PPO, which virtually all of our employees are in if they have our coverage, and then a traditional PPO plan that currently only has four members, all four are retirees. So we will be closing that plan to any new participants. That will save us a little bit of administration and just, you know, a few claims that might hit on that side of the plan. So that's just something to streamline things going forward. There's virtually no impact to anybody in terms of benefits. All the benefits are the same, primarily under the plan, if you go into a network provider. And then lastly, also as a separate memo, is we were working with Peter Wright and his group again to review our Medicare retirees that are on our plan. Currently, they stay on our village health plan if they wish to do so, even when they're eligible for Medicare. Benastar is a third-party administrator. They have been providing strictly Medicare supplement plans to, you know, very large groups. There's many, many communities in the area that have been using the Benastar plan as part of their Medicare retiree options. So the village felt it was prudent to move to that sort of a setup for now and into the future as we continue to have, you know, our retirees reach Medicare age. As detailed in the memo that is separate, it's basically a Medicare supplement plan. We feel that this will be more beneficial to our retirees because it's actually going to coordinate with their Medicare plan, unlike the insurance that they maintain through the village, which is secondary to Medicare. So typically, in that situation, the Blue Cross plan isn't paying any claims that Medicare would have otherwise paid. So there's very little benefit to be gained for the premium cost outlay that the retirees are currently experiencing with our current setup. So we feel this would be much more cost-effective and provide a more solid benefit plan to our retirees that are eligible for Medicare.
Thank you, Christine.
Any questions? Now, it's a lot to cover in a very short period of time, very complex, but I'm willing to address any questions.
So I think we'll just do a motion, and then for a discussion, if someone has a question of you, then we could do it that way, if that's all right. So is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Baumis, second by Trustee Woodside. Any questions or discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just, are we voting on with the stop-loss or without? I couldn't tell based on how you described it.
Our proposal includes the stop-loss. We are requesting approval of the proposal that includes the laser on the one claim and the 16.9% adjustment.
Thank you. Does that have to be part of the motion?
I think it's just the way it's laid out currently, right? Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
No other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Ross?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Baumis?
Aye.
Woodside?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Christine, for your hard work. And last item is public comment. Anybody that would like to make a public comment to the Village Board, please step up to the microphone and state your name. There being none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Baumis, second by Trustee Garner. On favor, say aye.
Aye.